To a eight-year-old flood survivor. So, we encourage you to come out and see this special ceremony. We encourage all first responders to represent their at that time. Taps will be played every evening at DES. The event is open 24 hours a day to the public. If you want to see something beautiful, walk the 500 American flags as you see here in the evening. It's free to the public. It's open to everyone. The theme again this year is honor your hero. And you may purchase a flag for $45 to honor your own personal hero. I know several of you in the room have done that in the past. We have new and improved flags since we are now
I was looking at that.
In control of the event. And we hope that will better serve the community. And at the end of the event, you get the pole, the flag, the finial, which is new. We had a citizen donate new finials for all 500 of the flags. So, we're pretty excited about this year, some changes, but we, we hope that it's improved. And we welcome the community to share in this event because it is the community's event. All proceeds go back to the community. Gunny's Warriors does not keep any of the money. This is our way of thanking the community for supporting us in our mission to help Hill Country Veterans. Thank you.
And Mike, as usual, always dominates the microphone.
Yeah.
We wrote Shango for it.
Before y'all leave, I'd like to get things kicked off. And I saw y'all brought some extra forms if anybody's interested in
Yes, sir.
Getting a flag. Thank you for what y'all do, guys.
Are you, are they leaving those here, the forms?
There's a couple down here.
Okay.
I gave you one.
Okay. Any other public input? I don't have anybody else signed up, but none? Then we'll move on to Commissioner's comments. Precinct One.
Yeah, things are going really good. Still down at the Ag Barn or Hill Country Youth Event Center. I'm sorry. Still trying to adjust to that. But with Commissioner Harris on a daily basis, we're getting a lot of things done. I want to remind people that there's certain phases to this operation that are kind of wrapping up. And so, if, if we know that we've got stuff out that needs to be dealt with, you need to get ahold of us so we can do that and make sure we get it to the appropriate places so that they can get those, those areas handled. The other thing is, is don't forget that all the nonprofits around this town and the work they're doing. So, I would ask you to include them in your prayers whenever they keep doing it because these folks are still out every day working hard. Even though the biggest portion of all this seems to be passing us already, there's still a lot of work to be done. And for us to get Kirk County healthy again, we've got to really get after it. And we've got to support these folks that are out there. So, don't, just because you can get up and go to the store and everything seems fine in your life, remember there's a lot of folks out here that it's not. So, I just ask you to remember them and continue volunteering your service where you can.
Okay. Well, I've been working with Mission Mules to place their modular two-bedroom homes with flood victims. So, we did find a match for one of our Center Point residents. And I'm also working to help find financial aid for some of the other flood victims who ended up spending a mon, bunch of money, missed the opportunity to get volunteer groups that would do some work for free in, anyway. So, I'm trying to help them. Also continuing to work with groups and individuals who want to help restore our Lions Park and Flat Rock Park facilities. Pleased to tell you that Woodsman Life has committed to providing playground equipment and a large lighted flagpole for Flat Rock Park. That donation will be on the next agenda for approval after we meet this week with FEMA regarding replacement of the old playground equipment that was destroyed in the flood. And I'm also continuing to coordinate with American Legion who wanted to help with the restoration of, of Flat Rock Park. And we also have a, a couple of different people who are groups that want to donate trees. And I believe there's an, an agenda item for one of those such donations later. I really want to thank our Road and Bridge Department for repairing the roads and parking areas in Flat Rock Park. Roads were heavily damaged by the flood. And with the work that Road and Bridge did, they look better than ever. I can't remember if I've ever seen them look that good. And I'm particularly pleased that we were able to do this with materials and funds from last year's budget. When I asked Kelly Hoffer to see what they could do, I had low expectations considering all the other work they had on their plate and the limited funds that were available. But all I can say is that my expectations were tremendously exceeded. So, thank you, Kelly, and the entire Road and Bridge project, anybody who had anything to do with it. We have an agenda item for Lions Park restoration, so I'll hold off on that. I did attend a meeting with Tech Dot and our engineers and Road and Bridge personnel on Crossing Street Bridge Project to better define the type of bridge that would be installed in an effort to minimize the footprint and the associated impact on the poor little endangered mollusks that inhabit the Guadalupe River. So...
Let's not go there.
Yeah. Someday, maybe that'll happen. I don't know. And, and of course, I've been attending the weekly Flood Warning System team meetings. I believe Tom Mosher's going to give us a progress report a little bit later. And also intended, attended the airport master plan review. That plan includes capital projects totaling over $107 million over the next 20 years or so, of which the county would be asked to fund nearly 12 million. Of particular concern are the projects funded 100% by airport sponsors. So, I'll just say that while we value the regional airport and want to support its growth and improvement, funding will need to be closely scrutinized so we get the biggest bang for our bucks, so to speak. And, and last, I'm going to host another town hall, second one. Tonight, it's at Hosanna Lutheran Church, 6:00 PM. I'll talk a little bit about the county budget, its impact on property taxes, but the vast majority of the discussion will be about the tragic July 4th flood, its impact on our community, response efforts, and future mitigation efforts. And Center Point Volunteer Fire Department Chief Charles Holt will be there to talk about our Center Point VFD's amazing efforts. That's it.
Great.
Yes, sir. We had one fire burn ban request that we decided not to go with. They wanted to launch some fireworks. Just really too dry. Wasn't hard to make that decision. It was supported. But yeah, we're waiting for more rain before we start celebrating that way. Marriage is important. I appreciate that sacrament, but not this time in this weather. Flood assists. We also have been involved with one home, and I appreciate what they're doing for the modular homes. They've been working with one family in particular who lost their, their home. And Habitat for Humanity's come on board, and the modular home folks as well have come on, provide case manager to get them back on their feet. It's been a whole kind of community effort. For one person, it was kind of left unaware until about last month. So, thank you for that referral, Robbie. Center Point VFD, been supporting their efforts as well. As you may know or may not know, they actually go far into east Kirk County, all the way almost to Elders Bridge and provide support within my precinct. So, not only volunteer, but I'm also helping their, their future station number three. We don't have much of a town in east Kirk County, as you may be aware, but we do have a kind of a town hall gathering this Sunday in Cypress Creek, the old schoolhouse. That is Sunday, October 19th. For those that would like to come for dinner and a gathering, I'll be providing some comments over the year that's been in office for Precinct Three. And that's it. Thank you.
All right. Well, every, every year, Mountain Home Volunteer Fire Department has a annual steak dinner and fundraiser, and, and they're always great. But this one was really above board. They really did a good job, and hopefully they brought in lots of money. But it was well-attended this last Saturday. And as these, VFDs have fundraisers, try to attend. You know, the, whatever you pay for the steak dinner or whatever, buy a few raffle tickets or whatever, it really goes a long way. And even though Mountain Home has an ESD, they don't bring in near the money of the other ESDs. They started their tax rate very low, and it, it just hadn't kept up, kept up like the others have. So, remember them. Couple of things coming up. Saturday, the 25th, the Hunt School Carnival is going on. They'll have silent auction. They'll have all kinds of little events for the, the kids to participate in and kind of a Halloween celebration. So, try to go out there and, and, and have fun with them. Divide School Wild Game Dinner's coming up Friday, October 31st. And that's great for our smallest school district in the state of Texas. And it's well, always well-attended and good food. So, you'll have a good time with that. You know, I've told several people lately that I think our job description has changed a little bit to entail stomping out false rumors. And there's lots of them out there I've had to deal with from time to time. You know, the other day, somebody said, "We hear y'all, y'all aren't going to fix Cade Luke." Did you hear that one, Tom?
Sorry.
Also, what's going on at Ingram Lake? Well, the cranes are, and barges are being brought in. You can see the work going on. The latest report is we're hoping, fingers crossed, that maybe they'll get started with strategically removing materials this coming weekend. That's what it's looked like. So, that's all I got.
Let's go on into the consideration agenda. Item 1.1, we've got several timed items that we're going to take them in rapid-fire order here. 1.1 is consider, discuss, and take appropriate action on request to approve a proclamation declaring October 5th through 11th as National 4H Week. Jennifer Smith.
They can. They're not eligible to be here today. The leaders are in protest.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Got a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Read the proclamation or anything? Read, read the proclamation? I don't know. Probably. Okay. Make sure everybody understands what we're voting on. This is the National 4H Week proclamation. Whereas, this year's National 4H Week theme, Beyond Ready, reminds us that 4H is building a ready generation in a world of change and equips young people with skills for the future while meeting them where they are today. Whereas, 4H is America's largest youth development organization, supporting 6 million youth across the country. And whereas, 4H programs are delivered by the Cooperative Extension System, a community of more than 100 public land-grant colleges and universities across the nation that provide experiences for young people to learn by doing. And whereas, 4H is in every city and county in the United States and helps 6 million youth become engaged, successful, and independent. And whereas, 4H connects young people and adults to their communities, preparing them for work and life through experiential and inquiry-based learning while providing emerging research for positive youth development. And whereas, expanding from its strong agricultural roots, 4H helps young people explore the world around them and grow into productive adults. And whereas, supporting future leaders in science, agriculture, and community leadership is an important imperative for the U.S. Department of Agricultural, Agriculture, National Institute of Flood and Agriculture 4H Program. And now, therefore, I do hereby proclaim October 5th through 11th, 2025, as National 4H Week throughout Kirk County. Encourage all our citizens to recognize the 4H for the significant impact it has made and continues to make by empowering youth with the skills they need to lead for a lifetime. And witness hereof, hereon too, I set my hand on October 6th, 2025. That is the proclamation. Well done. It's a, it's a great organization. Yes. I mean, I think you've commented in the past that you haven't seen too many 4H kids in juvenile court. Is that right? No, I haven't seen any Perfect. 4H kids. Not a one. That's, that's worth repeating. I've been, I've been either sitting on that bench or monitoring that bench for eight, nine years now. Yeah. Not one 4H kid. What does that tell you? Yeah. Great program.
Keep them busy.
Maybe my kids should have joined 4H.
Best think about it. Too late, they went to tech. Yeah, you ought to have.
We've got another timed item. Let's move on to 1.2, which is to consider, discuss, and take appropriate action on a request to approve the resolution for Deert Center to apply for the Texas Department of Agriculture grant for Meals on Wheels services in Kirk County. Brenda Thompson.
Good morning. Once again, we thank you so much for the county's support for this particular grant. We have to have a match from our county, and it's based on the number of seniors 65 and above in our county. And it's like $2 per senior that we figure out this amount, $4,625. So, that allows us to write a grant to the Texas Department of Agriculture. Last year, last fiscal year, we were able, we were awarded $29,000 from TDA that allowed us to provide Meals on Wheels in our community. We, last year, we provided over 70,000 meals to homebound seniors in our, through our home, Meals on Wheels program. And of those, we get a portion of the funding from Title III, which is the APOG, and then a portion from TDA and a portion from Health and Human Services, Title 20, 20 reimbursements. But it's never enough to completely cover the program. So, with community support and grants and wonderful community support over the last 56 years, we were able to continue that program. So, TDA grant is really important to us because they come back and reimburse us for some of those meals that we didn't get reimbursed for through that other funding source. So, yeah, we're, and we're doing great. Our Meals on Wheels program, we missed one day during the flood. It was the first day on Monday. I was just, we, we didn't deliver because I wasn't sure what the streets were going to be for our drivers and our volunteers. And once we were able to determine that everything was good to go, they started on Tuesday delivering, and we haven't missed a day since. So, our homebound seniors are, are getting served. Our congregate meal program started August 4th, and we've gone from 172 the first week to over 300 this last week. We did over 300 meals through our drive-through program. So, we're looking forward to opening very, very soon. You'll, you'll be hearing about it very soon when we open and we have our congregate meal program back in our building. And 20,000 square feet of our first floor, the whole first floor flooded. So, we've been doing major renovation projects, but it's coming real close to the end. So, we're real excited about that.
I move for approval. I'll second. Got a motion and a second to approve. The Meals on Wheels program is presented by Brenda Thompson. Discussion.
Brenda, the day I got to come down there and help serve, I'm going to tell you that it was not just enjoyable. It was, it's, it's a fun thing to do. But your volunteers are so enthusiastic about what they do. I mean, they, they have so much, they enjoy their service, which is what, what it's all about.
We had about 60 of those volunteers show up the day after the flood and mucking out mud and what, and
Yes, ma'am.
It was amazing. It was amazing.
Yeah, they, they love that, they love being able to serve.
Yeah.
And that's, that's an incredible ministry. I appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
It's eye-opening.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Got a vote? No, we got a vote. Yeah. Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
That's not hard.
All right.
And for those of you that are not familiar with this program, you need to get, you need to get familiar.
Right. We're looking for volunteers.
And you need to deliver the meals.
Mm-hmm.
You need to go to their homes and see what you're doing.
Yeah, we're looking to expand toward, more towards Hunt, the Hunt area. Right now, we're working with a group that's helping us bring some volunteers in to help us deliver out in Hunt, the Hunt area. So, there's, I'll recover all of Kirk County. So, if you have any needs or people that you know of that are age 60 and above that are homebound, give us a call, and we certainly see about you on the program. Thank you.
Next timed item is 1.3, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action on a request to approve a proclamation declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Suzanne Tommeler.
Good morning. Yes, I am with Hill Country Crisis Council, and I am here to request that the county proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Domestic violence is as prolific in Kirk County as anywhere else around the country. It does not need any gate code to get into a fancy neighborhood. It is, has no socioeconomic boundaries, no racial boundaries. It is a, an insidious public health crisis. And we have a large staff at Hill Country Crisis Council that work toward assisting those victims every day.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve. Approving the motion for declaring October to be the Domestic Violence Awareness Month is presented. Any discussion?
Is this also a national time for the, like, cancer is normally October for breast cancer.
Yes, yes.
This should be also domestic.
And we are as well, yes.
Breast cancer, I thought.
Breast cancer and domestic.
I think we're all tracking that. Just wanted to state that.
Yes, yes.
We should follow suit. Okay. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Thank you.
Can I present some awareness pins?
Oh, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's neat. Pen. Domestic awareness pins. And they're purple. Item 1.4, the next timed item, is consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to accept the report on the 50th anniversary of the Kirk County Historical Commission. Ms. Bond.
Good morning. My name is Bunny Bond. I live in Precinct Four. I am the first vice chair of the Kirk County Historical Commission. I'm appearing today in place of the Chair Barbara Oates, who is not able to be here. There is a two-page attachment that is part of the agenda, if you're looking on your phones, that is a brief history of the Kirk County Historical Commission. I do want to say that thanks to Linda Stone, who is a member of the Historical Commission here today, most of the information in that two-page brief history is in the display cases right in the foyer of the courthouse. She took the information and transferred it to panels, and they're in the display cases. I basically am here to just do this very brief report. Yesterday was actually the 50th anniversary of the appointment of the Kirk County Historical Commission. On the 13th of October in 1975, the Kirk County Commissioners Court established the Kirk County Historical Commission and appointed seven members. Now, I'm not going to read the names of all those seven members. They're out in the display case if you'd like to see them. But what I would like to do is to add some information that I don't think is in that document or in the display case. I want to say thanks to the members of that Commissioners Court in 1975 and read you their names because some of you will know who these people are. Judge Julius Rheinhofer, Commissioner Precinct One, William Cade Schwethelm, Commissioner Precinct Two, Clinton Melvin Sally, Commissioner Precinct Three, William Adolf Martel, Commissioner Precinct Four, Roger Everett Stone. Julius Rheinhofer, I think, served as Kirk County Judge longer than any county judge in the history of this county. Some of these other gentlemen served as long as 20 years or more. I don't think anyone served as long as Commissioner, former Commissioner West. Has certainly been privied over half of the history of the Kirk County Historical Commission. I do want to say that some of the duties of this Historical Commission, one is cemeteries. And we are charged with locating and documenting cemeteries. There are 45 identified cemeteries in the county. But the current count of actual burial sites in the county is 80 locations. That's a lot of locations. So, we have, we're always working on updating that list. 11 of those 45 cemeteries actually have Texas Historical Markers on the cemetery. The other big project that we've done ever since 1998 has been oral history. So, there are over 150 recorded oral histories on the portal to Texas history. If you've not been on the portal to Texas history, it is maintained by the University of North Texas. And they're running a bit behind getting things posted up there. It's always a matter of money and staff, as the Commissioners know well, in order to get the work done. But we appreciate the fact that we have so many posted there. One of our next responsibilities is Texas Historical Markers. And for the first 36 years, from 1936, the centennial of the state, through 1972, 13 markers were placed in Kirk County. After the commission, the County Historical Commission was established, from 1977 through 2020, 75 more markers have been established in the county. And all the marker requests for historical markers must come through and be approved by the County Historical Commission. There are currently 88 Historical Markers in the county. Two more have been approved, but they are not in the ground yet. So, two things I want to say about the flood. We drove around and inspected cemeteries after the flood. Not immediately because we were asked to stay off roads if possible, but we did check the cemeteries that we were very concerned about, including Wharton Cemetery on Wharton Road, which is very close to the river. We also inspected Texas Historical Markers that we knew might be affected by the flood. Two, the initial count was that two markers were missing. One of those markers has now been recovered by Tech Dot. It has only minor scratches, so they're in the process of putting it back in the ground again. And to conclude, I just want to say very briefly, the Historical Commission is very grateful for the space at the Kirk County Annex. That new office has made a real difference in the way we're able to have meetings and work on projects. So, we certainly appreciate that. We also appreciate the financial support over the years because I've read back through 25 years of annual reports that the commission made to the Commissioners Court. And you've always been very diligent in providing financial support. And lastly, I want to recognize the help of the judge and the county commissioners, including Commissioner Holt, who is our liaison to the Historical Commission. But I also want to recognize Jody Grenstad, who feels a lot of request and helps us, and we really appreciate that. And Noel Putnam, who is one of the members of the Executive Board for the Historical Commission. Thank you so much for your support. We're very proud. We stand on the shoulders of many hundreds of people who've served on the Historical Commission and done so much work to fulfill our mission, which is preserve, protect, and promote the cultural and historical aspect of Kirk County. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the report from the Historical Commission.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the report from the Historical Commission as presented. Any discussion?
Just one point to put out. Living history Colonel Ali Burton, thank you for your support and providing a display inside of our Veteran Service Building, 550 Earl Garrett. We look forward to the dedication of that building name on Veterans Day. Y'all have been great to work with us for that. And, you know, I used your oral history that y'all recorded on him to help with his presento. Surprise, I'm not going to tell you what the presento is. You got to come to the event to see that. But I use that oral history, so thank you for doing that.
And Linda Stone is one of the people working on helping Barbara Oates with that exhibit.
Yeah, y'all, y'all seem to do very well in preserving our history at different locations, including here and then over at the Art Center. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And my observation is that y'all play very well together.
We do. It's been a real goal, okay? And form wonderful partnerships with a lot of our concessions in the community.
And it shows.
You need to check out their office in the West Cor Annex. Yeah.
We're very proud of that.
It looks sharp. Y'all do good work over there.
All those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Moving on to item 1.5, which is our last nine o'clock timed item, which is an update on the Kirk Together Long-Term Recovery Group. Todd Bach.
Thank you, Judge and Court. We will work through a slideshow, give you an update here on Kirk Together Long-Term Recovery. We'll start there, yes. Todd Bach with Kirk EDC, here to give a report on our stakeholder update for long-term recovery. Todd Bach with Kerr EDC, here to give a report on our stakeholder update for long-term recovery. As we continue through this progress of setting up the Long-Term Recovery Group and our works, we will continue to get better at our reporting and will continue to get better at our communications. As we move forward, we do have a foundation that has stepped up and is going to fund for us a PR firm and a PIO in order to help this organization to get the word out to the community as to what we're doing, where you can go for help, and looking for funding sources, both on the individual and the business side. Court, if you look at the top here, this is our current Board of Directors Working Group. As you will see, we've got Kerr Together Chair of the Long-Term Recovery. We have the Kerr EDC, which I am the executive director of, the steering committee of the Long-Term Recovery, moving across to the Business Recovery Working Group, the Funding Coordinating Working Group, the River Flood Warning System Working Group, the River Repairing Working Group, the Housing Construction and Management Working Group, the Emotional and Spiritual Working Group, and the Unmet Needs. Those are your Board of Directors. Along with those Board of Directors, as we, as we see fit as a long-term recovery working group, we have subcommittees working under those working groups, and we will also be able to pivot at any time that we find that there is a working group needed to be stood up in order to help Kerr County's efforts of recovery. Below the line there, you're going to see a list of what we are going to have as paid positions and support staff for the Long-Term Recovery Group. This will be funded through a grant from one source, which is, has a, a, a sub-funding source called Rebuild Texas, which is used in a lot of disasters throughout Texas. They have asked us to apply for a grant that we are waiting on our approval that will fund some of the administrative, then help fund the PIO, Research Officer, and a Resource Coordinator, along with another grant funding that Kerr EDC received, which has the two of the Long-Term Recovery Consultants, William Whitston and Kim Faust, that are working under the umbrella of Kerr EDC, to help out all of the working groups with their experience in disaster and helping to seek funding and assistance of all communities throughout Kerr County. We're also working with a partnership, Jim, the Global Empowerment Mission. They are a worldwide VOAD company that offers a tremendous amount of support and resources to Kerr County, which we will be looking to Jim as our large umbrella VOAD to help out with warehousing, volunteer coordination, construction management, and business case managers, as well as currently, right now, working through the blessings of the Community Foundation to stand up a warehouse out of OLE in Comfort to manage all of the donated items, those that are currently within the community, those that are remaining at the airport, and those that are out in Hunt. They will then take those into this warehouse where everything at that time, through all of our donations, will be inventoried and monitored, as well as having the ability to store donated goods, as far as rebuild materials, sheet rock, wood, and materials that will be used to rebuild throughout Kerr County. And I know it was alluded to earlier, Habitat is working on the far eastern end of the county from the edge of the Western Kendall County all the way through Kerrville. And then we have the Hunt Preservation Society, which will be running the home construction from Ingram all the way out through Far West Kerr. Next slide. This is a list currently of the Board of Directors and the working groups in which they are the Chair and Vice Chair of. The Kerr EDC is myself, with Deputy Director Teresa Metcalf, and under us is the Communications, which is led by Tim Rye and Kim Clarkson. Government Affairs is a working group that we are still working on setting up, and the Business Recovery is led by Chris Hughes, Broken Arrow Ranch in Ingram, and Paul Zip of James Avery. Then we have our Economic Development Subcommittee, Kelly Hagamire and Larry Howard. We have our Tourism and Recovery. That has changed. That is actually going to be Julie Davis as the Chair. And under the Arts and Cultural, we've got Catherine Boyette and Angela Kennedy. And under the Guadalupe River Flood Warning System, leading that, we have Tara Bushino with UGRA and Bill Rector as the Vice Chair. And I'll get to a, a, a slide here in a second, but you know we've got the Emergency Response and Public Safety. That organization and that working group is being put together currently, right now, by Chief Maloney in the City of Kerrville. Mass Care is Debbie Zabaka, which is of the Red Cross. Then we have our River Working Group, Jonathan Lex, behind me here, former Commissioner, and Becky Etzler. Unmet Needs is Beth Palmer and Lori Payne. We have a VOAD providing legal assistance to those survivors that need that legal assistance, and that is led by Brittany Gomez of TR, TRLA. And our Emotional and Spiritual Care is led by David Payne and former Mayor Bill Blackburn. And Housing Coordinator for the East and West are both John Dunn of Hunt Preservation Society and Mary Kimpana of Habitat for Humanity. And Infrastructure is John Dunn and Bruce.
Big Neil.
Big Neil, thank you, thank you. So these are currently some of our working groups that make up our Board of Directors, and they are the actual leaders of these working groups that set, schedule the meetings. All of these working groups are meeting regularly, at least once a week, some twice a week, and in order to get all of the needs through Kerr County at least identified, and then we can go through a process of identifying those needs, whether it be individual needs or business needs. Next slide. This is an example, Court, of the Kerr Together Long-Term Recovery Board sitting above one of our working groups. This is the River Flood Warning System Working Group, which consists of UGRA, Kerr County, City of Kerrville, City of Ingram, Emergency Service, and Public Input. As you can see through each of these, and I won't go too much in detail, we have other speakers here to speak about this. Tara is here to speak on behalf of UGRA, and Commissioner Moser is here to speak on the County Department team, which he is leading, that you guys put into motion, this, this court put into motion. This is a very active working group, putting together what we're going to consider the gold standard flood warning systems. And this, this organization is meeting at least once a week, and I'll let the others go into detail when they get their turn to speak about what they're doing within this working group. But this is just one example of one of those working groups and how we have them structured and the work that's going on under Long-Term Recovery. Next slide. Going to turn our attention here to the State of Business Recovery. This is one of our other working groups. And Court, just as you know and are very well aware, the data that we receive changes almost daily. The current most up-to-date is approximately 260 to 265 affected businesses in Kerr and West Kendall Counties. That number represents those that were directly affected by rising floodwaters in the flood of July 4th, and those that are impacted as indirect economic impact as a result of the flood. Seventy-four businesses were self-identified as directly impacted, with over 90% of those businesses contacted by business case management teams on the working group. That was physical phone calls, identifying their needs, and to help us put together what we're calling the Business Recovery Construction Project to help these businesses that were directly affected get back on their feet. We currently have heard from three of the businesses that have closed, and one has sold as of October 2nd. As we'll go down to the 74 directly impacted, you're going to see here, we'll look at the camps identified as eight of those camps that were directly affected by the rising water. This does not include all of the camps in the camping industry that have been affected by Legislative House Bill and Senate Bill 1. This is just those that were directed, or impacted directly by the flood. As you can see, the vacation rentals throughout Kerr County and the short-term rentals in Kerrville, Hunt, and Ingram were 28. Retail stores of 15 in Kerrville and Ingram. Services, service industries were affected were 14, and that is countywide. Restaurants, two in Kerrville and Ingram, and agricultural residential nonprofits, four. And that was a mix of all locations within Kerr County. Next slide, please. Here are some of the numbers that have currently been compiled, and again, these, compiling these numbers were due to best estimates or waiting on contractors' estimates. Some of these are very hard numbers. Some of these businesses have had the ability to get with their contractor and have hard numbers mixed with those that are in the middle of it versus best guess estimates that we have. You'll see on one side we'll have materials. That is a percentage used across the board from the total rebuild estimate. The total rebuild estimate consists of labor, materials, soft costs, and professional services in the total rebuild estimate. If you go down to the total, we're at $58.6 million, and I will let you know that there are some of these organizations and some of these businesses that are not in this total yet. As of this morning and the last evening, we were having conversations with these businesses to do their best to get us some sort of estimate, because the Business Recovery Working Group has been tasked with, by the 20th of this month, having a proposal together and presented to the Community Foundation on the 20th of October. So we're working very diligently to get these numbers as short of as possible. And again, just like the housing did, put together a rebuild program. We are currently also working on a rebuild program for business recovery. The bottom number there is the businesses excluding the numbers for the camps. These are the numbers that we have currently for the businesses, materials, and full estimate rebuilds. The other number that is missing on this that we are also trying to go back is some of those businesses are already in the process of rebuild, so we're trying to get best estimates from them by receipt on what they have spent at this moment, so that we can get that calculation as well, and try in our, in our program to get a reimbursement program put together for those that were able to jump out there and get ahead of the program that we're currently trying to build. Next slide, please. So federal and SBA programs, many of our businesses were very hesitant to accept or file for the SBA and federal programs that we have. We have been and have a wonderful relationship with SBA. Yvette Cruz has been in most all, either in person or by Zoom, in our business recovery. She is helping that working group continually to guide us through the process of applying for SBA. I would urge and have been urging everyone, every business, to please apply to SBA, whether it be home, business, or the economic industry disaster loans that is actively still ongoing. We will also be working on setting up a Long-Term Recovery Center. James Avery has been so gracious to offer us, at a very minimal fee, the use of their facility at 98 Coronado. Kerr EDC will be signing that lease very shortly. That is a very large facility, about 7,800 square feet. We plan on having what we're calling the one-stop shop, where businesses and individuals can come, see somebody, get with somebody. As we know, the DRCs and the BRCs are located throughout the county. We want to bring all of those into a single locations to assist all of our Kerr County and Western Kendall County residents in seeking funding that is available now or could be available in the future. We are partnering with Lift Fund. Lift Fund has been in the community. They've done a fantastic job in distributing grant monies, both provided by the Community Foundation and other funding stakeholders. You'll see the Community Foundation, Wells Fargo, HEB, Bank of America, all of which have helped out with the funding and distributing of those funds throughout the businesses and individuals throughout the community. And very interesting, if you look at the job retain, this is based on the number of businesses, how many employees they had, and the ability to keep those businesses stood up while we're waiting and continue to help out those businesses, which is a very large number. And to that, I will go into the fact that WorkSource Solutions Alamo came to us very early on, end of July, 1st of August. The Department of Labor has a program in which they fund Texas Workforce Commission, which trickles down to WorkForce Solutions Alamo locally. Kerr County was awarded, from the Department of Labor, $890,000 to help those that were unemployed or displaced by the flood get employment throughout Kerr County. The details of that and how to apply for that, this is very new, so the infrastructure on how to apply for those that were displaced during the flood is not set up yet. As soon as we have that information, we will be blasting that out throughout Kerr County, how to get those folks set up in jobs to help, and those jobs are primarily, and the job descriptions are set up to help recover Kerr County. Our local banking partners, the community banking in Kerrville has been amazing. We've all met together on multiple locations. All of the local community banks crossing lines, helping out others, whether they're your client or not, directing them directly to the other community banks that are participating with their own internal financing programs. It's just been a, it's been, it's been a wonderful to see how all the local banking has come together. Next slide, please. So in our funding pipelines, what we are looking at is our local coordination between Kerr Together Long-Term Recovery Group, Jim, Lift Fund, and also bringing people, fund together to help out with all of our financial institutions to help speed the recovery process. The Commercial Rebuild Grant is a tool that the Business Recovery is working on, and that will be submitted into the Community Foundation, which has been a great partner for long-term, for the Kerr Together Long-Term Recovery. Continue to focus on data-driven funding justification, and to that, McKenzie and Company reached out to the Community Foundation, and we'll be having meetings with them. McKenzie is coming into Kerr County to offer their services to do economic impact studies, and that is going to be vital for our community. That will actually pinpoint areas in which our economic, our economic efforts need to be pushed a little harder towards, and we're looking forward to getting that online. We meet with them this week, and we'll have more information as to when they can start that economic impact study on Kerr County. Next slide, please. And we'll go through this real brief so we can have some questions at the end. This is just a quick timeline, these next couple of slides. When we got started as a task force, very early on, website, Kerr Together launched, mayor announces, and the judge announced Kerr Together website for all your up-to-date information that was coming straight from the JIC out of the EOC. Multiple meetings, twice daily recovery meetings with TIDMS, up to seven days a week. Teresa Metcalf, who is now back with Kerr EDC, arrived full-time, helping out the Kerr Together efforts. Next slide, please. And then here is a, just a quick timeline through the month of August. Long-Term Recovery Consultants came on board. We began case management and coordination meetings, Long-Term Recovery Consultants' first day online. Kerr Together Task Force began formalizing Kerr Together Long-Term Recovery. The Kerr Together Long-Term Recovery Group came out of the Kerr Together Task Force. It was started by Mindy Wendely, myself, and Kelly Hagamire back on July 7th. Next slide, please. And this here is through September. The first official Kerr Together Long-Term Board Meeting was on September 9th. Then we go through September 16th, began discussions regarding warehousing and donation management was a, as everyone is aware, was a much-needed source. We found out very quickly, we don't have a lot of large warehousing, and thank goodness, we are, we are nearing the end of that problem at OLE, and up to 20,000 square feet there in Comfort, which Jim, the contract with Jim will be warehouse management, forklifts, delivery trucks. We're very excited to get that, get that online. And as soon as the September 22nd, the Board, the Board reviewed their first project from the River Working Group for non-woody repairing initiative, and we're funded through the Community Foundation based on a timeline. Amazing work being done out of that group led by Commissioner Letts, and that's how quick we were able to get our first funding request to the Community Foundation for that project. Next slide. Now I'll open it up, Court, for any questions.
Just a comment. There's no one up here that could do what you do, Todd. This is where you were meant to be. All your experience that you've had, God didn't put you here to sell RVs. It was to be here to do this. You know, and I frankly...
Paid a lot of bills, though.
Well, yeah, but, and you made a lot of connections with that, which is very useful, but I, I'm floored, man, with the amount of work that you've done, with the service that, and all the contacts you've given us up here on the bench, that this is where you were meant to be in life. So, thank you.
Yeah, outstanding, Todd.
Thank you. Well, I, I must admit, I have an army...
Yeah, you do.
...of volunteers within this community behind me. It wouldn't be possible without each and every one of them, and we're adding them daily. It has been, as we all know, the resilience of this county, it has been just amazing, everybody reaching out to work, and so many people in here are familiar faces in all these working groups and the meetings that we go to. Everybody is working seven days a week, 12 and 14-hour days, and that's what's making this possible. It's just a blessing for me to be a part of it, and I feel very blessed.
Sure. Todd, would you mind just explaining a little bit more about the non-woody repairian projects? projects that's going on?
I'm, I'm going to refer to the expert of the non-woody species.
And, and I'll preface that with, you know, we, we keep getting all kind of requests to use some of the so-called mulch to put it back and that we've removed too many. So if you can kind of address that, too, because I, I know, I know we're not going to do that, but...
The, the mulch is documented, the mulch that was picked up...
Yeah.
...through the, through FEMA's assistance will not be available for anyone in Kerr County. Various reasons, I'm not going to go into all that details, y'all probably know more better than I did. What the River Group is working on, there's two organizations that we're really involved with. One, San Antonio Botanical Gardens, they have stepped up and are coordinating the growing of fifty thousand new trees to plant along the river, and that will be done in the next several years. First year, probably next, eh, next winter, hopefully we'll have some. And then the non-woody species portion of it, we have, through the grant, have ordered and will be giving away, I think it's twenty-three thousand non-woody, which is grasses, sedges, no one knows what the sedge is, it's a little grass-looking thing that grows right next to the river. And a whole lot of seed, we are purchasing, gosh, I forget, it's like over a hundred thousand dollars of seed. Of all of those plants and all of the non-woody plants and the trees are all free to the public and governmental entities as well. In the budget, Hill County Alliance is coordinating that portion of the non, the seed and the non-woody plants. So, and there's others going, that was, that initial grant that we've got, the Community Foundation was to kickstart that because we need to get some things in the ground right away. That was a hundred fifty thousand dollars, and that money, that grant is actually with Hill County Alliance, they're coordinating all of that for us. And a lot of those plans will start giving away to the public. They're having three workshops. First one's November ninth, and Parks Property and Hunt. The next one's the, I think it's the fourteenth, I hold it at that date, I'm pretty sure it's the fourteenth, it'll be at Riverside Nature Center. And then the third one will be at the Mosby Property in Center Point. And then all of those plans will be given away to the attendees, and they're asking the attendees to be people that live on the river. And that's the intent of where the plans go, and it's going to be education, it's about how to plan and what to do, and assistance in planning if you develop. All of those grants include providing the labor to do the planting. However, it is encouraged that the property owner participate in that because the feeling that this came out of the Blanco flood, there is a far higher success rate of the plans that the property owners assisted in the planting than those of the people that came in to plant, they had ownership in them, they were the care. So, that's a quick summary of...
Thank you. Very helpful.
Any other questions for?
The McKenzie Group for EIS, is that the McKenzie Group?
I have Dallas-Fort Worth McKenzie. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
It's a good poll.
Bear?
Pretty well-known. And they're doing you EIS. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well-known.
Thank you.
Which is critical.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Very experienced company.
Okay. We've got a couple of timed items, and I'm trying to get out of the way. I know we're running a little bit late, but I want to make sure that the time item people get out of here before the break. So with that, I'm going to call item one point six, which was scheduled to come at nine-ten. As you can see, we're running about fifty minutes late. This is considered discussion, take appropriate action regarding the status and recommended plans for the development of the Guadalupe River Flood Warning System. Tom Moser.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. If I can have the...
I need to change the single page.
That was a hint, we ran a little bit behind from the judge. Okay. This is, we're making very clear that this working group that we have obtained to establish, I'll correct Todd on one thing, okay? It's not a gold standard, it's going to be a platinum standard, okay? On the flood warning system, next chart, please. In the way of background, the flood warning system, we tried to upgrade this in two thousand sixteen, we weren't successful. Since then, UGRA has done some work, which Tara will speak to in a little bit of what they're done. And then on July the fourth, we had the flood. August the twenty-fifth, Commissioners Court established a flood warning system development team, and that's what we are. We're a development team. I'll go through that. So, the, next chart, please. The court order at that time on forty-one, four sixty-five was to develop the concept, goal, definition, requirements for a united, United Kerr County Flood Warning System. I was asked to lead that, which I've been honored to do. We will present a plan of operations, each one of the organizations, and that's what this is about today. Next chart, please. Our team has been extremely active. As Todd mentioned, we meet at least once a week. We've listened to a lot of people on systems that they have in existence. Today, we have myself, Bill Rector's not here, Rich Paces is part of the team, he's here, Ray Howard. I want to mention Ray Howard here. Ray Howard, City Councilman from Ingram, has been going through some major health issues. It doesn't stop right. He drove from Houston the other day for a meeting, then went back to Houston for some more medical care. So, Ray, thank you for all you're doing on that. Jonathan Letts is here, he's a member of our team, he's also a member, is, is of the Long-Term Working Group. And then Thomas, Emergency Management Coordinator, is our other member. Tara has been the facilitator of this team, and we couldn't have done what we've accomplished today without Tara doing all this. So, next chart, please. Next chart. Okay, no, you skipped one, if you don't, go back to one. There was one on project development. Anyway, the, the development process on this project is the same as any. Mentioned this before, I'm going to use my experience. Phase A is define what the concept is supposed to be. Kennedy said, put a man on the moon, that was an idea, okay? The next step was to define what we needed to do. So that definition was develop a seven-hundred, seven-point-five million-pound thruster or rocket, a couple of spacecraft. Phase C then was the design and development of that operation, and that was the design of all those pieces for the, putting the man on the moon. And then phase D was the operations, that's when we put the man on the moon. So where we are today in this, in our concept, back to the flood warning system, I want to read this very carefully. Establish and maintain a flood warning system with fully automated capability that provides adequate warning of an impending, life-threatening flood in sufficient time for people to reach safety. So that is what we're doing, and I'm going to tell you how we're doing it. Next chart, please. This is a busy chart, but there's a lot of information on it. This is a concept of the architecture of the entire flood warning system. On the left-hand side of the screen is the prediction system, and I'll talk more about that. On the right-hand side is the projection system, where the warning goes out to the masses of the public. On the left-hand side, it's composed of a lot of sensors throughout the county, throughout the Guadalupe River Basin. They are information from the, from the National Weather Service, rain gauges, and flood gauges in the river itself, okay? That then, that information, each one of those pieces goes into models, okay? Models are of the terrain of the entire river basin, okay, including the tributaries. So when a drop of rain falls, okay, as predicted or as measured, it will then determine where the flood could be and how much the flood will be. Those models are huge and they're complex, and they go into a computer system that very rapidly turns around and says, the flood is going to be at a given location, and this is how much the flood is going to be, okay? So to put that in perspective, if you're using National Weather Service, you may have fifty percent confidence, okay, based on the weather prediction of where the flood's going to be and how much it's going to be. The next step is using rain gauges. That's probably going to then predict the flood where and how much, and that's probably going to be a ninety percent probability of that's going to happen. Then when you're measuring the stream, the, what's happening in the river itself, that's like a ninety-nine percent. So the confidence in predicting the flood and where it's going to be is going to be extremely accurate, okay? To develop those models is going to be a significant project, okay? But that'll be part of the acquisition. On the right-hand side, okay, that's where is, is, I think the judge was talking to me, says, what you're talking about is on the left side is the brains, and on the right side is the mouth. Well, that's a pretty good analogy, okay, from the lawyer. The, the, the warning system, the warning hub is a very smart system in itself. It takes the information of where the flood could be and to what extent it is, then it sends that message to specific locations. If it's a siren in Center Point, that's the only one that's going to be affected, only that siren will get the message that there's going to be a flood. The same way wherever in the county that flood is predicted to be, that's where the notification will be sent. Two types, or several types of notification. Number one is the sirens, okay? Yeah, we're going to have sirens, okay? Number two is going to be mass media, okay? It's going to be cell phones, it's going to be code red, and those are the general warning systems. It's also going to be local warning systems within individual camps, individual RV facilities, individual homes. As long as they can receive that signal from the smart intelligence communication hub, their system will be activated. Make sure that everybody understands that. So the mass warning for the public camping along the river who do not have this, perhaps do not have cellphone information, okay? That will be given to, to all of these entities, okay? Early on, when it's predicted to be a flood, the direct, the information will go directly to the sheriff's office, volunteer fire departments and things, not necessarily to alert the entire public that there's a flood which is imminent. So that's what the total system is. One of the, the models, as I mentioned, is a major challenge to develop these models. It's big, okay? It can be done, and it will be done. The other part is, in the projection side, is getting that signal from the communication hub out throughout the entire county. The information, the, the radio frequency signals through satellites, whatever, it's not clear exactly how that's going to be done, but we will figure out how to get it done, okay? It'd be nice if fiber optics went to every one of the warning locations, but that fiber optics doesn't exist, and won't exist because it's too expensive to put that throughout the county. We will figure it out, so. The next chart, please. So, where are we today? So, we have listened, there, there's a lot of capability in the state and in the nation of companies that do both the prediction and the projection. We've listened to a lot of them, we're continuing to listen, we'll listen to more this week and the following week. Then we're going to establish all of our requirements. We said by the end of the year, that was our original schedule. I think we'll have the draft of our requirements by the end of this month. So we're ahead of schedule, we're pushing, we would like this system to be up and implemented as quickly as possible. We're going to help prepare the request for proposals. Our requirements then will be translated and put in, incorporated into requests for quotes or requests for proposal, whatever the right thing is. How that's to be done is still to be determined between the entities that have the authority to, to purchase these, these systems. We have been communicating with, as Todd Bach mentioned earlier, with the Long-Term Plant Working Group, and I'll ask Tara here in just a moment to speak on exactly what she's doing. I kind of look at this development group for the flood warning system to be the near term. We're doing that very quickly. The group that Tara, the working group that she's heading with Bill Rector, that's working with them, communicating to all the communities that's going to need this, but that's going to be the long term, okay? So we've got the near term and the long term, okay? And we're also going to support grant applications. Next chart, please. So, here's where we go from here. Now, so after January the first, that's when the RFPs, the request for proposal, request for quotes, go out, and contractors will be selected. And that's probably going to be done between early January and probably sometime in March. Hopefully, we can make that even faster. Then after that is where you actually build the system, okay, and do system tests. So once you get it in place and system test, then next chart, please, we go into operations. And I want to mention one other thing that I failed to mention. That smart communication hub, it, it, it has the capability, or will have the capability, to integrate, integrate and determine the readiness of every siren along the river, okay? How are the batteries working? Is the console working? Is the antenna working? It will know what the state of health of every one of those systems is. Same thing for road crossing and warnings on roads and bridges. It will be able to determine without actually setting them off to determine the readiness of the system to work. So with that, let me ask Tara if she could say a few words about the Long-Term Working Group.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. Tara Bushnell, Upper Guadalupe River Authority. Just wanted to provide some context about UGRA's plans and the working group to go along with what Tom presented. So, you know, of course, a flood warning system, like any system, it's an assemblage of pieces, and it's procedures as well, different components. So as we've been working to develop it, I've kind of looked at them in, in some main areas, kind of putting all of those pieces into those, into three main buckets. So Tom talks a lot about the predicting, prediction and projection, and I think that's a great description. So that prediction is bringing in all the information from different sources, interpreting it, and then sending it out. And that really is a continuation of the work that UGRA developed requirements for back in January. I came and spoke with you all in May when we first selected our contractor, Kisters North America, who's developing this software in order to bring in all of those different pieces of information. So just a little bit more about those sources. Definitely National Weather Service forecasts are a part of it, so your weather, and then also other weather data that we have, like from Texas Water Development Board's MISO Net. So those are, those will be brought in. And then you have those, those real-time sensors that are out in the watershed, like the image showed, and some of those are operated by Guadalupe Blanco River Authority that are rainfall gauges, Lower Colorado River Authority, and then the US Geological Survey has our mainstream gauges. And then addition, and then, so currently, in order to see all that information comprehensively for Kerr County, you have to go to at least six different websites. So that's not, that's not a system, that's not feasible for us. So that Kisters software is going to consolidate that information into one location and create triggers that can alert off of different thresholds that will be, that will be set. And so the consolidation of that information will then be provided to emergency managers to have better tools for identifying when and where floods are happening. So UGRA's current project with Kisters is also going to identify, have a recommendations report to say, this is where we need additional rainfall, rain gauges, this is where we need additional stream flow gauges, and put those recommendations together. And some of those stream level gauges might be in expensive and kind of in vulnerable areas, and we know that if there's a moderate flood, they might be destroyed, but they will have information up to that point. And then we also, I've really made great progress with USGS about getting a new stream flow gauge on an upper reach of the South Fork, so that should be becoming within the next year as well. And then we're going to add that new South Fork gauge to UGRA's annual maintenance contract with USGS so that it is tracked just the same as all our other USGS gauges. And then those recommendations report from Kisters is also going to say what local models need to be developed in order to improve that prediction. So UGRA is committed to maintaining those data sources and transmitting them to our Kerr County emergency managers, you know, in the future as well. So the projection side of it, how all that information is going to get out within a certain time and within a certain manner, we're really leaning on the development team to put together those requirements, to kind of outline that in order to be effective. And that third piece, the emergent, is emergency services, how we're looking at it through the working group. Todd mentioned through partnership or through work with Chief Maloney, putting together that emergency services subcommittee that's going to help to identify needs and goals and gaps so that we can put in place the... and gaps so that we can put in place the procedures when that information is received, then what steps are taken to act on that information. And then also threaded throughout all three of these areas is telecommunications. So I'm bringing together a group to discuss telecommunications needs because it's going to be necessary throughout all of those. And also gathering information about the long-term operation maintenance requirements for all of these components, so that we can keep the improvements going in the future. So altogether, it's a system, it's complex, it's not an item that you put in your cart at the store and checkout, and it's going to have continual improvements, but we are, we do have our timeline and our, does indicate that we will have definite improvements in place in 2026, and that they can be continually added on. So we meet as the Guadalupe River Flood Warning System Working Group to communicate these updates in all of those areas, to build that understanding within the group, to under, to just be able to interpret the data so we can act on it, and also to keep those partners engaged because we're all, you know, working together towards that common goal of improvement for flood warning. So I hope, happy to answer any questions, but provide some context for the working group, yes, sir?
Just, I'm happy to see that warning sign with a flashing light on there. You've heard me talk about it before, how important I think that low water crossing gates and signs are, and I want to explain that so people understand. Any given day, there's six sheriffs out on patrol, right? Every shift, maybe eight in the future, but seven.
Seven, don't give.
Maybe, okay, yeah, seven. So, there's a lot of low water crossings, and anytime a flood happens, either sheriff or the VFDs will go to those low water crossings because there's no containment within that, right? And we have to sit on that low water crossing. When I reviewed all the 119 deaths that we had and how they went in, a large percentage were in vehicles, right? Not necessarily trying to drive into it, but many of them were either at campsites or trying to flee, because they don't understand, you can't drive through water, they don't know how deep it is, don't understand that a gas tank is a buoyancy tank on a vehicle and floats it up. So, the amount of time and dedication that we have to sit on a low water crossing means we can't respond to somebody that drives into the water, right? We can't, we can't abandon our post. That becomes a huge issue for me, right? Because it frees up manpower from sheriffs or volunteers, like Commissioner Paces and I were doing that morning, when we're sitting and guarding a position, that we can't, and we missed a lot of people, probably too many, because we're sitting and guarding a site. That's why I believe that those signs are so important. Now, from a federated network perspective, I also think about, ooh, what I've seen before with sirens is that they're connected to a cellphone, basically, and that, how'd that cellphone network do for us on that morning of, right? Messages are a little bit easier than getting a call through, but if a siren, if it's, is connected to a cellphone, is basically how they used to work, I want to make sure we have redundancy in the network, and I hope it's satellite, if it has to be radio, I hope it's truncated, and I'm not, I don't want to speak on your network, Sheriff, but a truncated network, or at least radio from point to point, where it can't get overridden by a volume of traffic. We saw that with our own radio network. Our repeaters were lost off our radios. We were only point to point because we couldn't hit towers.
That's still going to be the challenge.
I know, truncated towers, so what I'm asking for is your points of presence out there to report, whether it's a rain gauge or a flood gauge or a siren, that there's redundancy in the network, because we saw it got overloaded. And when you're relying on it, I hope you have that redundancy. And satellite is great, I'm not sure we have Starlinks to throw everywhere, but that stuff absolutely seems to be uninterrupted. Thank you.
I didn't want to get into too much detail there, but redundancy is key, okay? On the models and the way those models are run through computer systems, there'll be redundancy there, through the flood, through the transmission system, the communication hub, there'll be redundancy there, okay? I didn't get any detail either, but in addition to the automatic signal, it going out to sirens and all, the same type of thing, it's envisioned, we'll do the same thing for flashing signs on low water crossings, so that you do not have to sit there and do that. Now, there'll be some concern about, this is automated, it's going to be, you know, sirens going off, warnings going out? No, this is going to be not that. It's going to be when we know with confidence that there'll be. And so the signal will go out, and if whoever's in charge of this system wants to interrupt, okay, that signal going out automatically, they'll have a couple of minutes to be able to do it, but that's it, okay? The concept that these messages will go out to the warning systems, be it sirens, be it low water crossing, bridge crossings, okay? Cellular is, is okay, is there, but it's not reliable enough to warn the masses, in our judgment. So there's got to be a system, you know, one, one group laid out, you know? How many sirens would it take? Well, if you went, so there's just a little bit of overlap between all sirens throughout the basin, it's like 30 sirens, you know? I don't know if we need that, we need to determine exactly what we do need, okay? And, so I think this is all good. There was something that I saw this morning on the news, and I'm going to read it real quickly. Speaker Burrows said the committee, this is a joint committee of the legislature, will work to identify ways to strengthen the state's preparedness in response to flooding. So there's going to be a special committee set up. While progress was made during the special session to bolster Texan safety, the magnitude of the tragedy demands comprehensive and thorough review. I hope that this special group or special committee listens to what we're doing in this area, okay? They need to know that we're going to do this, the platinum standard, okay, for a flood warning system. They need to do, understand that before they, perhaps impose some rules and regulations that may or may not be necessary.
Totally agree.
So, we need to get.
And then they need to fund it.
Okay, thanks.
I'll just make a couple of quick, quick comments. You know, I, again, commend UGRA, particularly Tara, but Bill as well, you guys have done a great job, and I'm pleased to note that you were working on this before the flood. And, you know, you kind of took a beating back in July when we had a bunch of legislators come down here and make a bunch of off-the-cuff statements and throw a bunch of criticism out, but as I say, the real criticism and the shame was that we didn't get funding for a flood warning system years ago when it was sought. So sometimes people that are criticizing need to look in the mirror. Otherwise, I would just wanted to also throw out that, you know, one of the key things that I've been seeing with these flood warning systems that I really like, I mean, some of these, the, anybody in the public can monitor what's going on. You're going to have a comprehensive weather and data gathering system, and you can look for yourself to see what the rain gauges are telling us. And so for all those fire department personnel who felt they didn't get adequate warning, well, you know, when you get that crick in your neck or whatever that tells you that there's weather coming, you can start watching this stuff, and there won't be any surprises. We won't be waiting on dispatch to, to tell us to respond, they'll still do that, of course, but it's going to give us a huge heads up in, in terms of our emergency response. And, and for those people who live on the river, you better be watching this system for all the camps and, and parks and so forth, so. I'm, I'm really encouraged with what we've been seeing, and I'm confident we'll have a great system when it's all said and done, as long as we get funding.
Tom, hats off to you and your team. Oh, yeah.
And Tara, too.
Yep.
All right. Let me just say from the sidelines, I've been working with, with all these people, from Todd Bach and the Long-Term Recovery Group to UGRA and, and our flood warning system team. We fly all kinds of flags. There may be the volunteer fire department flag, there may be the ESD flag, there may be a municipality flag, there may be a regional flag, like a precinct. We have two, at least two cities in the county and the UGRA involved. And if you notice, UGRA is the only one that really carries the state flag. And so all of this is being done with their lead, and believe it or not, all these little Indians running around are on the same page, working together, pulling in the same direction, and there is remarkable collaboration and cooperation beyond explanation. That's all I can say. They're doing a great job.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back and finish up with the veteran services because they were timed at nine, at nine thirty, and we'll get back on track.